How you doing, man? Welcome back.
I'm good, man. Good to be back.
Yeah. Last time you were on, you were running for Norfolk City Council.
Yes, yes.
And you lost.
It's okay. It's always wins, man. It's wins within losses. It's losses within wins sometimes. But it was, to me, it's a win. It's a win-win.
How's it a win to you?
It's a win because I learned a lot, met a lot of good people. You made a big difference. Helped out my law practice, put my name out there more. Got to meet you guys. I'm here back again and we're still rolling. We learned a lot. So to me, that's a win.
Yeah, I guess it's like running for president. Like even if you don't win, it's just great, like marketing for whatever else you do.
There's one way to look at it, for sure, for sure.
Yeah. Did you expect to win?
When we went-
For being like real, like serious about it.
This is, this is way different than last time. This is, this is fun. This is like, not like, ugh. Last time was like, what are you gonna do? This is more like chill, you know? We can just kind of talk freely. I've been following y'all's stuff and y'all have been doing great and it's amazing. So I like what y'all doing. So I mean, yeah, we can just talk really- So it was more so like an opportunity when it happened. The person that I ran against, so I had the same name as me and nobody was running against him or anything like that. So, um-
Oh, wait, the person? Oh, yeah, he had the same name as me.
Yeah, yeah. So it was kind of like the stars of our-
That was a little confusing maybe for the public.
Yeah, it was, but it helped us out too. And honestly, um, y'all's podcast gave me a joke because there was a lot of people that followed this that really didn't know what was going on in the details of politics. And they kind of like helped retweet stuff and like share some more and more and more. And that kind of helped me get out there. So I got like, what, thirty-five percent of the vote for a first time person? And I'm putting too much money behind it, grassroots. I mean, we did good. We did really good in a, in a big city. So to me, that's a win, you know?
Was it just you two guys going for it?
On that, on that ballot, yep, yep.
Hmm, so you got thirty, so you got thirty-five percent of votes? I feel like that's good.
No, it is good. I mean, yeah, to me, it's because I'm, I'm a young politician. That was my first time doing anything. I really didn't understand the percentages, but you know, ten more percent one way or another, you have forty-five and then from there, you have fifty and then that's true. Right there, you win. So a couple more votes in another way, we could have really pulled that thing off. So to me, it's, it's a win-win.
Hmm, yeah, I guess, I mean, a lot of this stuff comes down to the marketing, like how much money you put behind yourself.
Man, just the experience we got from that, yeah, it's, it's just the marketing and just getting with the right people and having the right people put their, their hand on, on your shoulder. Like those type of things go miles, you know? So I've learned all of those type of things.
Yeah, like you said, that was your first time running for political office, some type of office. Do you see yourself running for anything else?
I mean, I was still on the fence about that. Um, I'm learning more about politics. It's very engaging. My heart's in it, but it takes a lot. Like your life is literally a public servant. Like everything is, is for that. Like, and your, your business at the time is gonna take some time. You gotta step away to give back to the community and do all those things. So it's a roundabout maybe. We'll see, see how things play out. The next time I will be around probably be like twenty twenty-eight. They got some smaller, um, I shouldn't say small, but smaller awards up in Norfolk for twenty twenty-six. So I've been having some conversations. So we, we, we'll see, we'll see.
Hmm, I was actually just talking to my brother about this the other day, or I was talking to my girlfriend, actually. And like, you know, when there's a presidential race, we all hear about it. The country hears about it and that's partly because they're putting hundreds of millions of dollars behind these campaigns for us to see it.
A lot of money.
And, and a lot of times in local politics, we're not engaged, like we don't really hear much about it. I feel like this current governor race right now with the two women, that's like the most I've heard about local politics like in my whole life.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, and it's, and it is spicing up. And you know, Virginia, you know, and, and I, I met, um, a couple of them, a lot of politicians that are running right now during my race. I got a chance to sit down with them, talk to them, and they were passionate about what they were doing then and they're extremely passionate about what they're doing now. And it's, it's very, getting a lot of attention. It's getting a lot of attention and it might be for the wrong reasons, but nonetheless, attention is attention, you know?
It's definitely getting spicy, like you said. You actually brought that to my attention. I didn't see the Jay Jones text, text message scandal or the controversy.
Yeah, yeah.
Till you sent me that. I have been seeing the governor race. I saw the debate between, is it Abigail Spielberger?
Spanberger.
Spanberger and what's the other lady's name?
Winsome.
Winsome.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I've been seeing like them debate. Honestly, when I saw their debate, because they had a, a debate on YouTube and it was like a similar to like the presidential debate where they're up on stage. To me, it just, I don't know why, but it felt like a parody debate. It felt like, I don't know, it just felt different than watching the president's debate.
Yeah.
I don't know, like what was your thoughts?
I mean, that's, that's a good way to look at it because when I look at that whole scenario, like you saw, you know, you saw the debate house, you just, they just zeroed in on one issue. It's kind of like they know that they might be, um, in a position to where the other side might be a little bit more prone to be better at what they're doing, to keep it frank. So if your whole tactic is to shoot down one person's, I guess, mistake and you're not really so focused on what you got going on that's going good, then I think that says a lot about who those individuals are. You know, I'm not, no, not being a, a nonpartisan viewpoint right now. It's just kind of my optics on that is like-
Are you saying the, the, um, the Republican candidate was zoning in on-
Correct.
-the Democrats candidate as far as her supporting Jay Jones?
Correct, 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 correct. Without kind of like, and that's all they're doing right now in their, in their own campaign. Like all the things you see on TV is just focusing on this one thing because that's what I think they think is gonna swing the vote is that the mistake or the text messages that came out. And to me, that kind of says like, well, if that's all you're focusing on, what did you have before this?
Well, I'll be honest, that's how I felt during the presidential race. I mean, honestly, with all these races against Trump, it seems like the Democrats, their whole campaign was about how Trump is so bad and evil, but they didn't really give us any policies that they were running on.
Yeah, and that's kind of-
That's kind of how I felt, like vice versa through the, the presidential campaign.
And the writings may be on the wall with this one because you know, if, the proof is always in the pudding.
And when you, when you see that tactic doesn't work.
Yeah.
Trump is now elected again.
Yeah, exactly.
So it's like people like, don't, yeah, like you said, don't focus on why this other guy is so bad. Tell me why you're so good.
Yeah.
Why should I vote for you?
Right, and maybe you want to chime in on it and mention it, of course, because the voters should understand what the issues are.
But don't make your whole campaign about that.
Don't make your whole campaign about it because that says a lot, you know? And then to talk about the, um, the text message situation, um, I followed Jay Jones' career for a while and he's, he's a young politician. He's very talented. He's an attorney. He speaks, um, speaks very well, does very well, comes from a great family.
But those texts were wild.
No, 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 no.
Very wild.
I'm not saying the texts weren't wild. And even, even himself says, says the texts are wild. But there's a couple of things you could say about that. All right, everybody, and I don't, and I say everybody, I'm thinking probably about at least ninety-nine point nine percent has sent something between friends or colleagues or whoever that you may want to take back. If somebody threw that in your face like, oh, wow, I did say that. I was, I was wild and I got shit.
I have, but I've never said I want somebody to die or their kids to die. That is an act level though.
That, that, that is-
I can honestly say I've never even said that in like a joking manner, I don't think.
No, I, I understand and it's, it's, because those questions come up about, um, you know, one bullet, two bullet, da-da-da, whatever. But it's different when if you're just hanging out, talking about it. But if it's something that's like spot on to your issue, then if it comes out, it could look bad. So I see that point, but what I will say about that is, you know, a politician, the playbook is, is deny, deny, deny. Nobody saw him do that. Nobody like did anything to, um, other than pull out the messages. So-
Oh, so is, is he denying it?
No, no. And that's what I was gonna go to next. He's being accountable. He's taking, he took accountability of it. He said it was wrong. He made a mistake and that's not who he is. And, and those type of things right there says a lot about who a person's character is.
Yeah, I bet.
Yeah, you're good. Yeah, you gotta make sure because you know, sometimes I do, my voice will travel.
No, you're good.
Yeah.
So you think Jay Jones is redeemable?
I think he's absolutely redeemable and the way I know that he's redeemable is because that's all that they're focusing on, you know? Because that, he's, he's running for Attorney General. Understand, that's basically the, the attorney for the Commonwealth of Virginia, which is a major position. And a lot of people, um, have different viewpoints about who's there currently. And I think he was the person that people were picking to win before all of this happened. And I still think that that situation obviously is gonna affect the voting, but I think it puts him right there. I think he's still right there and I think people think that he still might win. So I think that's a, a very big reason why he hasn't pulled out of the race yet.
It's also a very convenient time for these text messages to come out, seeing that it happened in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
And it's like just coming out now.
I mean, it's all strategic. All this is strategic, it's chess, it's whatever you want to put it. And it's just, it's wild to me to see that we're making the, the biggest mountain out of this. Again, text messages are wild. They are wild. But, but, but it's about who they're coming from too. So we've seen Trump say some wild things too and we all can agree that-
Very, very wild, uh, very wild.
And I think it almost would have been to the point to where if it's something equivalent to what was said in the messages, less or more, it kind of would have just, we moved on past that and just, it just is what it is. So they're using this as a reason to why they say he's not gonna be a good politician. But I think that's kind of what we call like a red herring. They want to distract and deflect and focus on why he's not good because of a, a one bad lapse in judgment as opposed to his whole portfolio. And just looking at it objectively speaking, I think that people should take away that one bad day in judgment and look at what he is and what he can bring to the table. And I think regardless of what happens after this, Jay Jones will be a successful person moving forward. Because the thing, the thing you take it from way, the thing you take away from that is accountability. You know, now if he's in there denying it, denying it, denying it, then now you got that. Now you got two things. He said, look, I made a mistake and I think all of us can say we've had some bad days. It's just that it doesn't always play out in front of the public like this.
Yeah, I think, um, right now is a real crucial time in our country as far as like the rise of political violence. And I think it is important for our leaders to stand up against that.
No.
No matter who it is, which side it's on, left or right. You saw this huge controversy when Charlie Kirk died.
Right, yes.
I even had personal con, like personal things going on because I still got against that, even though I don't know everything about Charlie Kirk and I never really followed him like that.
Right.
But I know that that's not the solution.
No, it's not.
It's never the solution, like even, so Charlie, we, we remember back to a few years ago, the, the healthcare CEO that got killed and everybody was just excited about that. And it's just a weird thing. Like we don't want to fall into that, that trap of like you agreeing with somebody, somebody you disagree with, they get killed and now it's like cool to you. But now what happens when it starts happening to people on your side?
Right, no, and, and that's the whole thing. So that, I've heard a lot of people say two bullets, three people, how does that play out, right? So when people say, it's almost like it could be considered a joke. This situation is like, I don't think it's a joke. I think it was more so like, it shows the type of passion that he may have had for what he wants to do. Now, did he come out in good character as far as like, was that how you want to go about certain things? Maybe not, but it's all about how you look about where is, where is this going? Like what does he want to do with this next? Do you, do I actually think he would actually pull a trigger? Absolutely not. I don't think he would ever do that, but-
I mean, I don't think he would do that either.
Yeah, so that's where, that's where it's kind of like saying the things, okay, man, bro, you shouldn't talk like that. Blase blah, acknowledge the fact you made a mistake. You said sorry, that was bad taste. Now, we all know he would never actually do those things. So now it's like, does that make you, um, not fit to do that job? And then I think that's where the question is right there. Can you come back from that? And I think he is redeemable. I think regardless of what happens, winner who's right now, I think he'll be able to come back because that's the type of person he is.
You said he took accountability for it. Has he came out and denounced political violence like directly?
Yeah, he says, I don't stand for any type of violence behavior. That was a mistake. I shouldn't have said that. All the things that somebody needs to say, he said those things and he, and he took it on the chin like, oh, man, should take anything like that.
Yeah, we live in a democracy, man. So it's, with that means, take it on chin, pause. It's like, we live in a, in a democracy. So inherently with that does, it allows everyone to speak. We have freedom of speech.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
And that will create tension sometimes. And we have to know as Americans like that, we can disagree and we can still see each other at the grocery store and get groceries and go home and not, not have things spiral out of control.
Yeah.
Like, because I mean, I know for like kind of firsthand experience, I'm from Bosnia. I was born at the end of the war, but my dad fought in the war. My, my grandpa fought, my grandpa died in the war. So I can see where like tensions like that can easily spiral into a war, into, into bad violence, that's a civil war or whatever it is. So we have to be conscious of that.
No, you're right.
And these kids coming up right now, like if you're like, if you're like in high school or middle school during Trump's first presidency, the pandemic, the, the like BLM stuff, like, like you've seen nothing but chaos and turmoil for like your whole like existence damn near. So it's like, what are these kids thinking right now? Like, yo, my country's going to shit. Like they don't believe in America anymore. They don't believe in democracy. Things are getting very weird.
It's tough and, and it's like me, I can sit here as an attorney and kind of think through things and see like how that could be a mistake, but somebody else that doesn't really look at the world the same way can see something like that and be like, oh my gosh, why would you say something like that? That's the worst thing ever. So I can see both sides of that. I really do see both sides of that and, and-
I mean, even going past the Jay Jones, so this is just in general, like people generally, you know?
I agree. And it's unfortunate that such a, a good campaign is kind of coming down to that one lapse in judgment. That's kind of how I see this whole scenario. It's like, it's just, it's just unfortunate, but you know, we'll see what happens.
When do we find out who is the new governor?
So it's the same thing like last year, um, November fourth is election day. You know, so people that are hearing this, you know, I urge people to vote. Um, get yourself educated on each candidate because this is a big race because the governor is like the president of Virginia. A lot of things will take effect after this new person is elected. Same thing with the Attorney General. They are representatives of the Commonwealth and they are the attorney for Virginia. So those things are major. Um, whether, where, wherever, what side you fall on, again, you should make yourself active and be a part of that whole decision-making process because if you're right, it's that important.
Yeah, I haven't really looked too much into either of the candidates', um, policies. I mean, have, have you studied them at all? Like are they, are either of them saying anything about the creative scene?
Not at all. I think, not at all.
Who cares about it?
I mean, and then, and then that's where, you know, I don't think, how should I put this? Cities, a city election is gonna affect because it's more like hits you in your face because it's like every day you walk down the road and it's gonna be creatively affecting you. The state legislation is more like a level up. And I'm not saying they should not look at that, but those issues are more like, you know, same-sex marriages, um, certain things that-
Is that on the ballot?
That's a part of, um, it's not on the ballot this time, but those type of things that affect the state, the state legislation and things of that nature. So, yeah.
I don't know. I, I, I think the, the funniest thing to me about the, the governor race in Virginia is that it's a black woman that's a Republican.
Yeah.
And it's a white woman that's a Democrat.
Yeah.
And just the optics are just hilarious. But that's like throws you off. You don't even know like, okay.
That's what makes it different.
It's like in those situations, you really got to dive into the policies.
Right.
Because a lot of times people would just go off of like, I'm gonna vote for who looks like me or like who's on my side, who's on my party. Like they don't even care really what the policies are.
Yep, yep.
But you really got to tap in right now.
You do, you do.
Um, you have, well, you were already, um, a real estate attorney.
Correct.
When you were running for city council, I think you kind of just put that on pause while you were doing that.
Yeah.
Um, you're back doing that again.
Yes.
Um, can you just give us a refresh? What does, um, a real estate attorney do?
All right, so, I mean, anything involving real estate, to answer your question, no, I'm just joking. So as far as like-
Like a normal person might not know. I actually don't know because like, if I'm just buying a house, like there's usually no attorney involved.
True. So there's, there's twofolds to what we do as real estate attorneys. How about contracts? So when somebody's going to purchase a house, there's contract issues. Um, there's any type of issue with the title? Like say for instance, somebody's going to buy a home and for whatever reason, they can't figure out who the actual previous owner was or if there's multiple siblings involved or if there was a, a prior lien on it and if somebody's saying, well, I own this property or I need to get paid for this property. Attorney goes in and what they call quiet that title, like they go in and talk to the judge and say, look, this is how we're gonna work this out so the house can be sold. That's one way there. Um, step in when, and every time there's an issue between the agents and, um, lenders and all types of paperwork that goes involved, we, we kind of do that. But what I've been really focusing on as far as that side, so, is, um, title and escrow. So this is what we do. Our, our job is to, um, make sure when first time home buyers or anybody purchasing a home or commercial real estate, we handle everything from the beginning to the end. And when you get to the closing table, our job is to make sure that we get you your keys and we have a, a good time at the closing table because that's a big investment. It's a big, major accomplishment to anybody that's involved that affects so many different people. So what I've brought to that whole, from the political campaign to now being an attorney, to realizing how this can help people in such a different way, like the affordable housing issues that we talked about during our campaign, we're bringing those things back around, um, land, things of that nature, creating land trust, doing all those type of things where it's like in the niches, like real estate attorneys get deep into the niches, um, foreclosure attorneys, we have helped out those type of situations. So it's not necessarily more glamorous, but, um, it's lucrative. And what we do with title is, so I brought some things for you guys.
You got some props?
Yeah, I got some stuff for you.
Okay.
So this is kind of what we do when people close on homes. So we have a program like first time home buyer. Like I see a lot of people that they, you know, everybody, okay, somebody might not want to buy a home or own a home. They might not want to buy a home or own a home, but you're paying rent and there's no particular reason why you're just paying rent. You should try to look into becoming a home buyer. So we have a lot of loan people that work with us. They provide grants, all these type of things to get you to the closing table and, um-
And this, this is your company, right?
This is our company.
Regis, Regis, Highland escrow.
Got our own champagne. I brought you some stuff. So champagne we brought you.
The Regis champ?
Yep, we got that. Um, got a shirt for you here.
Okay.
Yeah, so we got some, some good marketing material.
Come on.
So that's that. Anybody that can see, which camera am I on? Is it either one?
Whatever one you want. We got to watch, yeah.
So that's that one. And then I don't know if y'all drink champagne, but I, I drink champagne.
I usually don't, but we can, we can drink some.
All right, cool. And I brought you a hat too, man.
Okay, appreciate that. Come on.
Yeah, so this is really for all my real estate professionals too. If y'all listening, tap in, um, we help out all our agents. We do a lot of good jobs for them as far, the mic, the mic, just keep reminding me, man. For all ages, we make it easier for you guys to close. We get you back to your next deal. Um, all our builders, if anybody looking to refinance, it's about to be a, a change in the interest rates. That's another political issue.
I saw they're going down, right?
Yeah, yeah. So it was at seven.
Well, I was gonna ask you too. So what is the average, well, what's the average age of, um, first time home buyers in Virginia right now? I think I saw in, in the country, it's like thirty-something?
Yeah.
Which it used to be like twenty-one.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, that's changing. Um, but we wanted to get that back to be more of a, a round group of numbers. So if you're an adult, I mean, we've sold homes to people that's eighteen, you know what I mean? So it's all about seeing a vision. Like it does take time. Uh, it, obviously it's easier to go rent. You just go drop whatever, show your stubs, whatever you're in there. Buying a home is a little bit more steps involved. You got to get a loan. You got to either show your taxes or you got to show-
You got that like two years of tax returns, right?
Yep, yep. Things of that nature. And then once people, um, will help you out. We know, we have a process that can get you through it. And if anybody's interested, investors, we do classes for them to get you kind of going as far as making money, all those type of things. So that's what Regis is doing right now. And, um, anybody that's listening that knows, so when we started around the campaign time, we were probably doing like seven to eight closings in a month, which is kind of okay. You know, it's cool. But since then, we tripled in volume. So we're doing closings every single day. We're getting a new contract today. It's going extremely well and we're excited about that. Our team over there, Colleen Prew, which has been helping out a lot, um, we're just, we're doing them, we're knocking them out. We're knocking them out.
Well, I know-
Can we drink some champagne now?
We can, for sure. While you, while you pour that up, um, homeownership is definitely a big part of the American dream, right? And it seems like these days, I mean, from my personal experience and what I've been seeing from other people, it seems like home, like buying a home is like the hardest it's ever been in America. Like I think they say that we're the first generation of kids that aren't really guaranteed to have, aren't really guaranteed to have like, you wanna, you want some champagne? We're not like guaranteed to have a better life than our parents did. It, cause like, you know, um, for the longest in America, we've, we've heard, you know, you go to school, you get a good job, you work hard, and, and you can buy a home, and you can have the American dream. But it seems like that's very hard for a lot of people to attain right now. And it is with the inflation, it's with the interest going up, it's with, the real estate market went through the roof during COVID. Everything went up like double, triple prices. From what I see, it seems like it's coming back down a bit now, I think I saw maybe a month or two ago that this is like, the first time in a while that homes were selling below the asking price. Um, because I think for a while there, people just couldn't afford it. Um, and then you hear all these stories about these big companies and organizations buying up all the single family homes in America, have you heard about this? Like, I think BlackRock is one of them.
Yes.
Every corner you go, you see, we buy homes, and there's these people with businesses with cash that, that outbid and, and can buy these homes just, um, quicker than, uh, like a family can, with a loan, cause if I come to you with a loan, and somebody has cash, you're probably just gonna buy, get the cash offer.
Correct.
Um, so they're making it really hard, it seems, for normal people to buy a home right now. Do you see that? Like, is that what's happening? Am I wrong? Like, what, what do you think about this?
You're right about that, but, um, we have a blueprint to help that. Cause a lot of people don't purchase homes because the education part, they just don't understand the process, they don't know what it needs to take. So agents are good to help with that, but sometimes people don't know what agent to go to, so they can come to a title company, we can have agents for you, I'm a lawyer, I can actually help do, purchase the home as well, if you already have that type of plan in mind. So it's just about educating yourself, but yes, you're right, it's, there was a thing a time ago called Redline, where they would make sure, certain people lived in certain areas, and also made sure that certain people weren't able to purchase or afford homes, so. What, what you're saying is not uncommon, it's been around for a long time, so. We preach ownership, we want people to own things, because that property or that purchase, could level yourself up, level your family up for another generation. You always got somewhere you can, um, put your key in and turn it, those type of things are what, um, we strive for, and what we preach over at Regis Title.
Well, I guess, what are some things you think, um, first time home buyers, like, don't think about? Like, what should, what should people know?
How long it takes, or how fast if you go, um, as far as like, getting the loan, oh yeah, getting the loan process, yeah. Finding your agent, um, knowing how you're gonna finance the home, knowing that you're gonna have to save up some money, knowing that your credit's gonna have to be properly prepared, right? Knowing where you wanna live, knowing the neighborhood structure, um, comparables, things of that nature, that is just, sometimes it's a brand new world if, when you're walking into, and it can be getting overwhelming.
Should we take this, uh, should we drink some champagne?
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Let's do it. Hey, you wanna come grab your, Karen? Jeez, first time drinking champagne on the show, I think. We've had a few different types of alcohol up here.
Yeah, I watched some episodes, I was like, why can't I be different?
Um, yeah, that's the gin bottle, Young Crazy Bruh, I got the Baby Don, that Breeze Barker brought, so I guess that'll be a new addition.
Yeah, for sure.
Cheers, man, congrats on the success of Regis, Thailand escrow, cheers, bro.
Your success too, man.
Thank you. We are looking for, uh, we can maybe talk after the show, but we are looking for, to add a few more sponsors to us, so I don't know if you guys are wanting to sponsor some local stuff, we can figure some stuff out, maybe.
Yeah, we sponsor a lot of things, man, just, just talk, just talk about it.
Okay.
Obviously it makes sense, man, I support you guys, man, you guys.
What kind of champagne is this?
We already talked about, it's Regis Sam Champagne.
Oh, like, is there like a champagne, I mean, not a champagne, is there like a flavor or something?
This episode is Regis Champagne, it's, it's, um, Moet, Moet Regis.
Put it on, put it on table if you want.
Okay.
They can't see it down there.
Yeah, so that's what we do as part of the closings, we make it a good experience, so. You go through this rigorous process, or a smooth process, but some people, it's very, um, stressful, cause you, you know, that's, it's a large purchase, it's one of the, probably the largest purchase in most people's lives, so we like to make it fun when it's time to get towards the end.
We may have touched a, a bit on this last time, but I guess, how did you even get into doing this?
It's a great question, so, um, one of the people I work with, um, he's heavy in the, um, real estate game, and we went to high school together. And he's just like, look, man, you're a lawyer, um, there's opportunity here, and one thing I, I should say is that, there's not, too many minority, I should say too many, it's only like one or two minority title companies in Virginia. So that's another thing, so like, especially young minority companies, so we, we, we hang our flag on that very proudly that, um, it's a game that a lot of people that look like me are not in. And we're actually being very successful in it, and, um, it's very, um, exciting what we're doing right now, so.
Are most of your clients like other black people, or?
Yeah, so that's a part of it too, but we have a diverse mix, the, our, a lot of our agents is, um, diverse, we have, I like to produce, I produce, promote diversity, so, but nonetheless, yes, we do have a lot of, um, people that are, are, are black that do close with us, without any issue, but that's just being a place where you can come, and you feel comfortable, and you can get some things done, and you're working with people that look like you, so. Prior, previous before this, it was never a place where you could go and do that. And me being an attorney, doing that, um, helps out the community, and again, it just preaches ownership where it needs to be at.
Did you start by like being a, a agent, or how did you even get into, like, do you, do you go, I don't think you can go straight to owning a, real estate firm? Don't you, don't you have to be an agent first and work under somebody?
That's, that's a good, that's.
Cause I actually got my real estate license.
Well, you, you, that's a, that's a good point, but you're speaking about a broker.
Okay.
Uh, so agents, they work under brokers. So this is not a real estate agency, this is a title company, this is where, agents or anybody purchasing a home goes to make sure they have title insurance, goes to where they can sit down and actually buy a house. So agents bring their customers or clients to us to help them close the, close the home.
Hmm, also, Karen, pull up, um, pull up, uh, BlackRock buying single family homes, just Google that, have you heard about this?
Not in detail.
So it's.
Always putting me on to something.
There, there's this, like, saying that's been floating around for the past like five years, where they say, the future, it will be, you will own nothing, and you will be happy.
Okay.
And it's like, you won't own your car, you won't own your home, everything will be rented. And a lot of people don't like that, so from, from what I hear, BlackRock is.
Everything to what I just said, but, uh, he's going against everything I just said, but, it's okay, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna hear, I wanna see what he's talking about.
Oh, wow, maybe I'm wrong. Um, go back up, what did that first thing say? So Black, so BlackRock is like a huge, um, uh, investment firm, I think, and they own like a bunch of different stuff. Um, we wanna make it perfectly clear, BlackRock is not buying individual houses in the US.
Okay.
What does that say? Am I wrong about this? Zoom in a little bit on that. Um, un, unhighlight that? A number of other large asset, damn, my, damn, my vision is getting crazy. Another, uh, a number of other large asset managers and private equity firms are very active, today in purchasing center families, BlackRock is sometimes confused with them. As a fiduciary asset manager, we invest and manage capital on behalf of our clients. So they just invest in other companies doing it?
Yeah.
That sounds like they do it to me.
It's all like that, they're the people that hold the money.
Yeah, like, so how can you say you're not doing it?
So let's read some more, BlackRock has invested in several programs that are providing finances to build new homes and add to US housing supply.
Most recently, we began investing in new construction, purpose-built for rent housing developments that add supply to the market and address increasing demand. We see for this. This is them saying it, this is a BlackRock website. Well, fir, the first, very first paragraph seems a little iffy to me, cause if you're not doing it, but you're investing in all the companies that are doing it.
You're doing it.
Like, what, what are we talking about?
Look, that's what, that's, that's, that's politics, it's fine, it's just workarounds, it's just workarounds to, to get to, like, what are we really talking about here?
Yeah, yeah, politicians like rarely say what they really feel.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's like a professional way to act, but from a, just a normal person, it, it, it gives off energy like we can't trust you.
Right, that's why people say you can't trust politicians, so I'm, like, people say you can't trust attorneys either, so I guess I'm in a bad spot, but I'm a good guy.
We can't trust you?
No, you could trust me all the way along, but I haven't been, I haven't been a lawyer or politician my whole entire life, so that's another thing there, so. Yeah, but, yeah, I mean, you kind of just say what sounds good at, at certain times, but.
Yeah.
And I, I think that I'm a, a different type of individual, because I didn't, I didn't come up like that, I just kinda just, I was, I'm a creative, I think so, and I kinda got into that lane, so that's how I look at that.
I don't know, man, I definitely wanna own a home one day, um, I, I, I mean, from what I, from what I see, like, you used to be able to buy a home with one income in America.
And you, and you still can, it's just that you gotta be, you gotta talk to the right people. People that show you how to make sure your credit score is properly, um, positioned, you have the right type of support or financing, and you also can get grants that, that kind of fill the gaps, there's so many programs out there that say, help you with down payment assistance, like, it's, it's really possible, if somebody wants to do it, but I get it, like, owning a home is not like, is a need for some people nowadays, sometimes renting suffices because you don't wanna be locked into one situation. You haven't got your family yet, you might not wanna be stuck in one area, whatever you wanna do, but ultimately, I look at it like, it's, it's an asset. So whether you have a home, now you can either rent that home out, you can go get another home, you can borrow off of that home, it puts you in the game, so whereas like, it gives you some structure, gives you some validity and something you can move off of, that's how I see it, anyway.
When you get buyers, maybe even first time buyers, what is something that they, like, mainly overlook, or like, what do you, what do you find yourself having to help people with the most?
Really, it's like not knowing the process, not understanding like what title agents are, um, how the real estate agent is supposed to conduct themselves, not knowing like, like home inspection is a process, not knowing like what a pick rate is, like basically, certain things you gotta, decide that you're gonna be okay with or not okay with when, when you're about to close your home, just, just from A to Z, just not knowing anything. So, I mean, and again, I, I purchased my first property fairly recently ago, and I had to go through that process, so I could understand like, how people could feel about that, it's, it could be overwhelming if you're not surrounded right, with the right support system.
You, um, another thing you texted me about, that you've been thinking about, is how AI will be used in the legal world?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I wanna get into that, have you seen, I think is, is it Albania, Karen, that we were talking about? I think it's Albania, maybe look this up, but they're like the first country to appoint an AI to be like a political position?
I didn't even.
You hear about this?
No.
It's, uh, look it up, it's, um, in September twenty twenty five, following a presidential decree authorizing Prime Minister, Eddie Rama to oversee the creation of a virtual, it's, so it's AI minister, it's called, uh, Dila, or Diala, or whatever. Uh, it's, it's the Minister of State for Artificial Intelligence, hold on, wait, um, yeah, go, open that up? I think it's, it's basically in charge of, um, like, uh, let me see this real quick. It's the first, making it the first AI system in the world to be named a cabinet-level government role. What does it actually do again, go down? I think it's pretty much in charge of who gets funding.
The AI is in charge of who gets funded?
Uh, what does it say? What does it do? Administer role, ministerial role. Um, Diala was formally appointed to Minister of State for Artificial Intelligence, the appointment followed, where's it, what does it say, what does it do again? Okay, so its procurement responsibilities are planned to be transferred gradually to the system. So it's in charge of procuring, um, what is it procuring? Uh, go down some more? What, if I remember correctly, it's like procuring, um, like applicants, like if you apply to like a government position, or like you need funding, it's kinda doing all that. And then I just saw last week, their Prime Minister came out and said, you know, this shit was actually crazy. He said that the AI had babies, he was like, he was like, Dila had babies, and now every, other like, every other like cabinet member will have their own AI, which is a baby of this main AI. It's getting kinda weird, I don't know. Um, how do you think AI will be used in, in the legal world in the future?
It's like, the future, you spit, spot on with that, like, having babies, this thing is growing, right? So like, it's growing in real time, I just remember probably last year, maybe about a, close to the end of twenty twenty, two or twenty, early twenty three, I kinda got introduced to AI in a sense of why you could use it. And I use AI to help in my practice, I do, but I would tell you this, like, I don't, at this point in time, I don't see AI replacing an attorney. Only because I've just randomly, um, researched things to see what it comes back with, and then I'll remember like things I studied in law school, or things I remember taking to bar, or just in practice, like, that's not a hundred percent right, and I get a feeling, like, let me just double check what AI is saying, and it's been a few times when it's just been wrong.
It's been wrong about the law, like what the law is?
Been wrong about the law, because what it does is, it'll take everything that's out there on the internet, and then sometimes it'll be laws that have changed, or might be like a certain nuance that wasn't added to it, that it doesn't pick up. So it's gonna say whatever, and if you don't know what you don't know, you'll think this is preaching the gospel, and it, and it's really not, so. Until it can kinda anticipate, I guess, what somebody's actually saying, cause if you have to trigger it, you have to prompt it properly. So until that's out of the way, I think that, you know, an attorney, you're on your feet, you, you know what's going on, you're a human.
Yeah.
That's where the difference maker comes in, don't get me wrong, it's a very valuable tool, it'll point you in the right direction, but I still think you need to have that, that legal, a person there to kinda guide you properly, and I'm not just saying it because I'm a lawyer, I'm saying it because, I s, I've seen it, I've, I've, I've used it to help out, and there's been times where I'm like, this is not it. It can get you jammed up, I even had to curse out AI, like, yo, if I would've just used this, we would've been fucked up, like, it got that serious, like, you know, you know, typing it out of response back, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, so. It's crazy how in tune that these AI things are.
Well, I know we're in a time right now where everybody's kind of, on edge or thinking about which jobs will get replaced by AI in the future, um, but to me, I mean, to play devil's advocate a bit, it seems like, uh, an attorney, would be a great job for an AI to take over, because it's so black and white, the law is the law.
It is, it is.
It seems like if, if it knows the law, and it can judge every case based on the law and not have any bias in it, it seems straightforward.
There's always a thing called depends in the law, like, it could be all the way through, and there's one little nuance that makes it depends, so it's like, this could happen, but that part happened too, and these things match up at one time where it's like, how you apply law to facts. That's the thing where it's like, where I think it's hard for AI to understand it, and.
So, but if it did understand that, and it could be up to date with the most recent information and know all the laws properly.
I think what you showed me right there by the Prime Minister and them, I think they, they're on to something. I think it, it can get there, and it's, it's getting better, as, um, as the months and days go past, it's growing, it's becoming more stronger and more intelligent. But it's also like exceptions to rules, and it's things that, you know, you won't really know just for black and white facts, it's just, certain things that just, it won't pick up, because like voice flexion, like, you can look at somebody and see, on a witness stand, like how they respond to certain questions, like that person's not telling the truth, you kinda feel those things, and I don't think a robot can actually do that.
For now.
And that's why I say for now, I'm not, I'm not doubting it, it might be something they could pick up like Terminator, oh, they got it now, but, this is a new age, right, and it's, and it's, it's changing in real time, and it's scary, but it's kinda exciting too, because, a lot of attorneys are stuck in their ways, and I'm not, I see AI as a tool, and I think it's gonna be growing, and I, and I add it to my practice, but I use it carefully. I understand that I can't rely on this thing completely, I have to be the lawyer driving the ship, not the other way around.
I guess, I mean, I guess it depends on the AI you're using, I know a lot of people use ChatGPT, or like Grok.
Never heard of Grok.
Grok is, um, it's like ChatGPT, it's, it's a, it's a chatbot made by, uh, X, formerly known as Twitter. So Elon made his own, his own.
Have you ever heard of Botlaw AI?
Mm-mm.
It's a new one that's coming out.
That's the one that's like for attorneys?
For, yeah, for certain job.
How does that one work?
So, things I was saying, from what I've seen and what I've heard, is it kinda can tailor and anticipate like, certain questions, so for example, the other day, this happened to me real time, um, I had a client, in the past, that had an issue with a protective order, so.
Like a restraining order?
Yeah, but in Virginia, they call protective orders.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but you're right, exact same thing, it's just some, some language, but still, again, AI, they might not know the difference, so, but that's the thing, so yeah, protective order. So, I was talking to the opposing counsel, common of attorney, and they were just saying, um, yeah, your client violated a protective order, this, that, and the third, um, the way we do it here is that, you have to do at least one day of jail time, that's just what it is, so I'm like, I don't know if that's true, so I researched it, and I looked it up, and it was like, okay, only time you have to do one day of jail time is if, if some violence occurred, or they actually go into the home, this, that, and the third, so I responded back to them, said, I don't think you're right. So, we're talking about it, she was like, pulled a code article, so I pulled a code article, and I looked at it, and I was like, you know what, it's, let me talk to myself. AI, it can get you jammed up, I didn't do this in front of the judge, but it was me talking back and forth with the other lawyer. She's like, yeah, this is a civil protective order, not a criminal protective order. So that's a prime example right there, like, you just typing in protective order, if the AI is not gonna be able to distinguish between, civil, meaning like, between people, or as opposed to criminal, like you're doing.
Well, that might be based on your prompt, you didn't, you should've put in civil.
There you go, but, and that's me, so what if you just don't know to do that? So if an AI can pick up to ask you back, is this criminal or civil? Somebody will be like, oh, this is civil, or this is crim, but it's not doing that, it's not doing that yet, anyway. But by, from what I heard, Bot, Botlaw AI is picking up on things like that, for individuals with contracts, and, um, real estate searches, and those type of issues that pop up there.
Yeah, I mean, in one hand, I see, the, the potential of AI, but on the other hand, I'm thinking, is this like the next NFT bubble? Where we all thought NFTs were.
No, that's not.
This huge thing, everybody put all this money into it, and then it kinda just flopped.
I don't think it's.
Right now, I think from what I've seen, it's like these, five different AI companies that are like the biggest in the world, and they're all just like sending trillions of dollars back and forth to each other, but like this thing isn't really doing much yet, like, we're generating videos and photos with it, and, um, from what I understand, it's, uh, 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 is being used a lot in like new military weapons that are being created.
Yeah.
But like, other than that, like, what's it really doing?
I mean, people research on it, it's like Google, but it's like Google times ten, so it's all about, like you just said earlier, the prompter, like, what are you using it for? So I think you can go down, err, in any black hole you wanna go down with it, and you can be extremely, good at what you're trying to do, if you take the time with it, and that's where I think where it's gonna stick, because of that.
It's gonna stick when they, uh, when they roll out these robot girlfriends, these AI girlfriends, pull that up, Karen.
I don't want anything to do with that.
They just dropped robot girlfriends?
Robot girlfriends.
It's over for you bitches, it's over. It's gonna be hard to compete, ladies, it's gonna be hard to compete with this.
Wow, that's crazy, so if they can do that, you know they can make a lawyer that looks like.
That tongue work too, that tongue do things.
Wow. But that's not a, that's not a, um, cheap date, I can tell, that's not, you, that's expensive, or you can't just.
It depends, you know.
Just get that.
You got, you have, you have to calculate, if you have a real girlfriend, how much money a month do you spend on her? How much money per year do you spend on this human girlfriend?
Wow, he's got a good point.
It could be, it could be cheaper, I don't know.
People out there, I know, are spending money on women, they are doing that.
Bro, when they roll these out, yeah, I mean, that's kind of a joke, but I mean, I, definitely, guys will definitely get this, there's certain, certain percentage of the population that needs this in the house.
But what, how do you know, other than, I mean, clearly, you can see like a robot right there, but how do you know that that's a robot, other than?
If it was like fully skinned, like skinned out, how would you know? I mean, you'll know, cause she don't, she doesn't say much.
Yet.
If it's a real woman, she wouldn't stop talking, no, they can't put that, if they put that, guys not buying it, if it's like, they make it like a real woman where they just, talk a lot, it's like, I'm not, I'm not buying that.
Like, what's the point?
Already got one of those.
Get that in real life.
Pull up the, the other one, so, I don't know if this is out for like, you know, to the masses yet, but there was one that just came out, I think it's called like, it's like a, it's something EO, so I think it's C, N E O, maybe? It's one that like, there, it's, I think it's twenty thousand dollars, they're roll, it's already rolled out, you can buy it, and it's supposed to be in your home, and like, do chores for you around the house and stuff like that?
Yeah, this thing is not a flash in the pan.
Go to, is that it? Yeah, I see right there, what is that called? Yeah, One X Neo, and is it twenty thousand? Yeah, so this thing, you know, it can like, do chores around the house for you, bring you water, bring you a little beer, wipe down the counter.
You guys seen the movie I, Robot, right?
Yes.
This is clearly I, Robot, that's exactly what this is, right? I mean, it's not what it is, but this looks just like it.
Early stages?
Yeah, alright.
I love I, Robot, she's been in the movie multiple times. You control it with VR? Okay. I mean, I think, from what I've seen, I think it had AI in it too, so it can like learn what you want it to do, and like adapt.
Yeah, man, what are we, twenty twenty five, watching twenty thirty five, how this thing's gonna be looking, man.
Bro, uh, yeah, like, to me, that's the craziest part about this whole AI revolution, is how quickly the advancement is happening.
That's what I'm saying, it's happening as we're speaking, things, people are just, just getting better on its own.
Like, look at the internet, the internet went from, okay, maybe it started in the late nineties, like people really started getting on it.
Yes.
By twenty ten, just like ten years later, let's, let's say fifteen years, like by tw, from like two thousand, the internet was still pretty niche.
Yeah.
Right, twenty fifteen, you fast forward just fifteen years, it's not a long time.
Yeah.
Everybody's on it, you can't run a business without it, politicians are on it, it's the main, likes, source people get their information from, it's like, you influence the population on it, you sell things, like, you can't live without being on the internet now.
Yeah.
So like, what is gonna happen with this?
It's gonna keep growing, man, that's why I'm saying, that's what I've, I've did some research, like, any type of business, get involved with that, AI, man, cause it's gonna take off, and it's like, get with it or figure it out, you know? It's gonna, it's taking off, like, you know?
Like, like I said earlier, we're like, we're just, you know, we're playing around with it, making little pictures and videos, but, it's like a really powerful tool.
Extremely powerful, extremely powerful.
You just walk into somebody's house, their robot just doing some wild shit, like pause, bro. I mean, I could see, you know, robot security guards outside the club.
All of that, that's taking jobs, I, I mean, all of that.
What's this guy saying? So the finger strength is about the same as a human, okay? I think that was one of the things that Elon was saying, cause Tesla's also working on like a Tesla bot for around the house. And it was like, it will be slow, and it'll be not as strong as you, so if you ever have to overpower it, you can, it's like, uh, do you have to think about that?
I don't believe that, because it's gonna be so smart, it's gonna be able to do its own thing, I feel like it's gonna be able to create its own thing on its own, like I, Robot actually did, like, I think like, once you give them the tools to learn, like how the AI thing have babies.
Make a, a more advanced version of itself.
Exactly, when you're not looking, that's what I worry about.
That happened too, there was, um, I forgot where it was, but there was like two AIs that they created, and they started like, like, they started improving themselves at a rate which they didn't understand, and they were also communicating in a language they didn't understand, the humans understand, so they shut it down.
Exactly, so at what point do you know the master is gonna be out foxed by?
Joe Rogan always talks about this, I forgot who said this, but there's a quote, um, if somebody said that in the future, like humans, humans are gonna be just the sex organs of the robot world.
That sounds so crazy and scary.
Right, and, I mean, also, I mean, I don't know, like, are we, people, people say this too, like, are, is this the natural step of evolution? Like, are we meant to create these things?
Yeah, you're getting deep now.
Are we meant to create these things that ultimately will, do things that we can't do, and like, is that why humans are here, to create this next life form, which is AI?
That's really deep, man, that's above me, I mean, that's, that's a, not a crazy thought, the way it's going, because, it's, it's getting real, man, AI is different.
Yeah, we'll see where it goes, man, um, so, you're doing real estate law, um.
Personal injury law too, but real estate.
Personal injury too?
Yeah, that's, that's been helping out a lot too.
Under the, under Regis as well?
No, no. No, no, so Mason Legal, and then we also, it's gonna start up something called a twenty five percent law group where, another thing that people do, that if you ever have been in an accident. A lot of law firms take forty percent, thirty-three percent, we're focusing on just doing twenty-five percent for those type of things. And, um, my Mason Legal practice is focused with personal injury as well too, but real estate is, is our main thing right now.
There's a TikTok trend right now going on, it's this, it's this one personal injury attorney that has these radio commercials and they're like really crazy.
Top Dog, well.
Is it Top Dog? Yeah, there's like a whole trend on TikTok about that.
Yeah, yeah, he doesn't need any more promotion. He's good.
Pull up one of his commercials, let me hear one of his, let me just hear it.
For Top Dog.
He's like, did you, he's like, did you crash your car and break your leg? Pause that shit, pause it.
Yeah, bro.
Are you doing any, um, what kind of like marketing are you doing for your companies? Are you doing radio stuff?
Twenty, twenty-five percent law group and see what.
Oh, and you go on Google?
Yeah, just type it right there, yeah, and see what.
Twenty-five percent law group?
Yeah.
Do you have YouTube videos?
Um, we did some things, I'm not trying to see what, I'm trying to see what comes up.
Is it that first one with the orange background?
No, no, I don't think.
Google it, Karen. Is it the word percent or like percent sign?
Um, the percent sign. So this is a new thing, this is a new thing that we're, we're working on, so.
And this is the personal injury firm, okay. Is that it?
That's it on, that's it right there, but there should be some stuff online, like a video, maybe not yet, but it's still, it's in the works.
Okay.
It really wasn't even.
Go back to that website, Karen.
But it's cool though. Yeah.
See what you got up here, scroll through that a little bit. Injured, don't let a lawyer take half your check. Twenty-five percent if we settle. At twenty-five percent law group, we believe you should walk away with more money in your pocket, not your attorney. Go on.
Yeah.
My dad's trying to find a, um, a disability attorney right now.
Yeah, we don't, I don't really handle disability stuff.
Um, so when, when did you start this?
This is probably going on two months now, we on the radio eighty-seven point seven, there's some commercials out there.
How much is a radio commercial right now?
It's a good question, so it can vary, um, they normally do it per like minute, so it all depends. It all depends, if you, you can spend like, like tw, twenty-five hundred dollars and get a decent amount of radio time these days.
Was that for like a month worth or like?
Yeah, a month worth where you get like, for per day, you get like, uh, every hour you get a thirty second spot, something around those lines. Give or take.
Have you seen any like returns from, or like benefits from having the radio commercial?
Yeah, for sure.
It works?
Absolutely, yeah, and, and that's just, we ain't even really like, started pumping it yet. I wasn't even gonna bring this up, but you, you're so good at conversating, conversing. You just talked me into it, like, this wasn't even on, wasn't even on the, the cloud for today, you know, so this wasn't even supposed to be on leash yet, but it's, it's, it's coming up, yeah.
Okay.
But probably like this time next year, this should be even with Regis, if not, if not bigger, because it's really a good thing. Because a lot of attorneys, and God forbid you ever get into an accident, but if you don't know what's going on, attorneys are coming, coming. Thirty-five, thirty-three percent, that's the standard, forty percent if they go to trial, our goal is to give you twenty-five percent and it's just clean across the board. Then we're just trying to help.
You get twenty-five percent.
We get twenty-five percent. I guess that's a good indication if you don't know, the attorney gets twenty-five percent, not the client.
Do you guys, um, is it, because I know a lot of disability attorneys are, are this way, do you charge an upfront fee? Or do, is it just if you win?
It's contingency.
Does that mean if you just win?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if you lose the case, you get nothing?
You get nothing, but our goal is not to lose, but yeah, so, yeah, if, if we, we're good at knowing the cases that are, are good from the beginning. So you can tell like, for example, typical car accident cases, you're sitting at the light, somebody hits you from behind, boom, there's liability. That's a good case. The cases that aren't so good is the other way around, the other person sitting at the light and boom, you hit somebody else and you're like, oh, they stopped too soon.
So you, you kind of already have a good sense of the, like, cases you will win, so you won't even take a case, you know you'll lose.
Try not to, we want to help people out, but we'll try to be like, look, cut your losses, brother.
Yo, I got in a really bad car accident, maybe like five, six years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was sitting at a red light, waiting to turn left and it was me and my friend, and there's like a median on this side and there's traffic on this side, so. I couldn't go anywhere.
Yeah.
I was right here by my house, by the Burger King, and there's a pickup truck coming from the other side on Jefferson. And he just came over to the other side of the road and literally hit us dead on, going like sixty miles an hour and.
Thank God you're okay.
Yeah, thank God, for sure, but we'll come to find out, he was a military veteran that had a diabetic seizure.
Wow.
And, um, the crazy part is, I swear he had a prostitute with him, because there was a lady that got out the car with him and then she just disappeared. She literally left the scene. Yeah, I'm like, why was, why would you not stay with this old man who's got in the car, saying, why would you leave him?
So she has to be a prostitute because of that?
I think so, like, what else makes sense? Like, why would you leave this guy?
Say that shit completely wrong because of that though, yeah, for sure.
But no, like, the, the only thing that saved my life, bro, like, luckily it was a smaller pickup truck, it wasn't like a huge pickup truck.
Yeah.
And then I also, at the time, I had a, a five series BMW, which is kind of big body. I think if I would have had a smaller car, he would have like rolled up on my fucking hood.
Did you talk to a lawyer after that?
Um, I can't remember if I got a lawyer or if my insurance just did it, but I got, I got money for it, I got money for my car, I got some money for like, like, physical damage. And then my friend also got some money.
Okay.
Um, so we got some money from it. Luckily, everything was okay, the guy was okay, everybody was okay, but it was scary. Like, me and my friend are just literally sitting here watching this come, like, watching him come out, we can't go nowhere. I'm like, so we're just like bracing for impact.
And you were driving?
I was driving.
So you know swerving?
I couldn't, it was a median on this side and then it was traffic just going on this side, so I literally had nowhere to go.
Yes, thank God that you're okay, man.
Yeah, um, Jeremy Mason, thank you very much, man. Is there anything else you want to touch on, anything you want to leave it people with?
Um, no, just, you know, be yourself, always be yourself and try to do the best thing you can and make a difference in the world. But I do want to say, you know, a lot of prayers and shout outs to our family in Jamaica, I don't know if you knew this.
I did see that.
Yeah.
Can we, can we actually pull up what's the most recent news from that? I saw, I can't, is, is it the most, is it the biggest hurricane ever recorded in history or in, or I know it's for sure the biggest in Jamaica?
The storm of the century period?
Yeah.
And this is the, the, the biggest and worst, baddest hurricane to ever touch land in Jamaica since they were recording it.
Are you from Jamaica?
Yeah, I'm, I'm one hundred percent blood Jamaican, I was born in Trinidad and I got a lot of family and friends in Jamaica right now, Montego Bay.
Hmm, have you, have you spoke to any of them?
It's crazy, I, I was texting my cousin, um, yesterday, real time, I was happening. One thing he said is like, it's a total disaster out here right now, um, we're good for the moment. I have no electricity, no water, but I can charge my phone. I reached out to him again the day I haven't heard from him, talked to my uncle. Probably a day before that, they were bracing for it, and he said he was good, I haven't talked to him, and everybody on WhatsApp is, is going straight to like, not delivered. So it's, it's, it's very unfortunate right now, yeah, so we don't know, but in Jamaicans, man, Jamaica's to me is not a real place. If you go on TikTok and Instagram right now, people are partying right now, so it's like two sides to like.
Partying? Oh, is, so is it certain places that, in Jamaica that didn't get hit?
No, they're all hit, they're saying it's one island, it's a big hurricane, it's bigger than islands, so some places, I don't know if it was right before or during. But you could see people like literally partying, drinking, cookouts, jerking chicken, doing whatever. And then, like, and then on one side, my cousin said it's a total disaster, so anything could be happening right now, so I, I'm just going off what I'm seeing, so.
I mean, that reminds.
Praying that everything is okay, you know, keeping the faith and, and this is one thing people don't know that about Jamaica, like this is per square feet in the entire world is the most, most churches. So no, no hurricanes ever just hit it directly. This is the first time it's ever happened and a lot of people are thinking like, oh, is this like a harp issue? Is man-made storm, da-da-da-dah?
I've heard about that before.
Yeah, because it went from a tropical storm to a category five hurricane in like, less than twelve hours or something like that, I heard.
Well, I forgot which place it was, but there was somewhere that had a really bad flood and it was like the week after they cloud seeded.
Yeah.
And then people are saying that that has something to do with it.
So, yeah, they, they want.
That also reminds me of Ukraine, because like Ukraine's at war with Russia, but then they're just like partying, like all the men are at war, but the women are just at home partying. Did you see these videos online?
We go from local state politics to global politics, yeah.
The thing about, um, like high, like high, or just like intense situations like war or. Like a huge hurricane where like your life is at risk. Um, my mom told me this during like, about the war when she was in Bosnia. Yeah, you expect that you, your sense of fear is heightened, right? But also, it's all your senses, so even happiness, excitement, joy, those are also heightened. So like, and when it's like, when you're scared in war, you're really scared, but then when you're happy, you're really happy.
Wow.
Like, all your emotions get heightened, like whatever you're feeling in that moment, it just, it just heightened.
That's deep, I didn't even never heard of that.
Um, so I ca, I mean, I can see why people will still try to have, you know, try to have a good time and, um, be positive about it or. Definitely praying for them, I hope, I hope everything is, I hope they get rebuilt soon. I don't know how many people have died, I haven't really seen too much about it.
Right, I, I've heard my aunt text me, she got some information that it was two hospitals that got washed away with people in it. So I'm getting mixed reviews, man, then like, if you go on internet right now, there's still some good, good videos that'll make you feel good too, so. Like you said, hi, happiness gets heightened, so very survival, very strong people out there, so. We wish them the best, man, prayer is up to that, man.
Prayer is up, um, thank you, thank you, Jeremy Mason.
Yeah, yeah.
Always great talking to you.
Always. Oh, yeah, last thing I'm gonna say.
Yes, sir.
This, I probably should have started off with this, but yes, J C Mason, that's what I go by now.
J C Mason?
Yeah, my middle name is Cyril, that's, that's from my Jamaican uncle.
So I should call you J C?
J C Mason.
Okay.
It's got a ring to it, right?
It does, but like if I see you in real life, I should be like, yo, J C Mason.
Yeah, I mean, you call me what you want to call me because I've known you, but I don't know like, I don't know like, okay, he's not feeling a J C yet, but soon as I.
I'm feeling it, I'm feeling it. I mean, I, I typically call people by like their, what the name they go by.
Everybody calls me Mason too, so I guess, you know, you met me during the campaign, it was Attorney Jeremy Mason, but a lot of people call me Mason. But J C is just my initials and that's kind of how we going with it right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, man.
Yeah.
J C Mason.
Exactly.
Come on.
Yeah.